Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mrs. Weber, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant. Mr. Comerford.
Here.
Mr. Evans. Mr. Mercurio.
Here.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Here. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Sycamore and Sims Elementary community has suffered a tragic loss. Ann Van Kirk, beloved principal at Sims Elementary, died last Friday after an extended non-COVID-related illness. Mrs. Van Kirk impacted thousands of lives in her 32 years of service to the Sycamore Community Schools. She served our community as teacher, assistant principal, and for the last 18 years as principal of Sims Elementary. Mrs. Van Kirk was a very special educator. When she was a second-grade teacher at Sims, she invited all of her students to attend her wedding. She says she couldn't imagine having that special day without her students being there. I was fortunate to have both of my daughters attend Sims Elementary. Ann was an inspirational leader who made every student feel valued, special, and part of the Sims and Sycamore community. She was quick to smile, had a great laugh, and worked hard to make any situation better. Her passion for the Sims community, its students, its staff, and families is unparalleled. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her husband Larry and the rest of the Van Kirk family. Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Ann Van Kirk. Thank you. Mr. Forstofel.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. I appreciate your words there. And I'll just take a moment to kind of share a couple of things, if I may. Obviously, the Sims community, the Sycamore community, is hurting today with this unimaginable loss. We lost a giant. When we think of Ann Van Kirk, we think of Sims Elementary because those two names are synonymous with one another. So we grieve with the Van Kirk family, but we also grieve with the Sims staff, the Sims families, both present and past. Because her legacy extends for many, many years. But in these times, families come together and they lean on each other. And that is what has been and will continue to take place as we grieve together. So please know that my commitment as superintendent is to do all that I can to take care of that school community during this very difficult time. And knowing what I know about the Sims family and the Sycamore family, we will continue to be strong as we continue to grieve together, to comfort each other, and to come out a little better on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forstofel. I'm sorry. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, including items Superintendent Agenda 4 and Personnel Consent Agenda 1 B C, 2 A B C D E F G H I, 3 A, 4 A B C D E F G H. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Mercurio.
Hi.
Mr. Evans.
Hi.
Mr. Ballant.
Hi.
Mr. Comerford.
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss.
Hi. Mrs. Weber, would you please review the meeting protocol, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. As you can maybe see, we have determined based on some of the recent health data and because our schools are working in a remote setting this week, that our board meeting is all virtual as well. So hopefully, many of you have been able to join us via Zoom. I don't know if we have. It looks like we are also recording this meeting, so if you miss it, for those of you who have missed it, we will post this. I need to go back and listen to it again. It will be available on our website. If you need access to the agenda, it is also on our website at sycamoreschools.org under the Board of Education page. Once minutes for this meeting are approved, they will also be posted on that page. For virtual participants today, if you have questions or comments, please feel free to email those to our moderators today. Either Chad Lewis, his email address is listed there, or Bill Fritz, his email is listed there as well. For those of you who are also participating virtually, we ask that you use the chat feature in Zoom only for issues regarding technical difficulties. We ask that if you want to participate in the meeting, that you'll need to be able to participate verbally and get permission to do so. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mrs. Weiss.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. I apologize for that. Mr. Forstofel.
We'd like to welcome a special guest this morning to the board meeting. So, good morning, everyone. I'd like to take a little bit of time today to update the board and the community on where we're at with our Healthy Aves update. Most specifically, an update related to how we are doing with our second semester planning. As the community knows and the board knows, obviously, we've spent a lot of time thinking about how we line up our second semester and knowing that we wanted to give parents an opportunity for choice moving forward in the second semester. We have done that. We have given our community that opportunity to request a change in their learning model for the second semester, and it's my intent today to give the board an update in terms of our data that we have, considering that our outreach to the community and opportunity for requests closed at the end of the day on Monday, November 30th. So, Mrs. Weber, thank you for this, for guiding the slide deck on this. So I think it's always important, as we work through a change process like this, to always remember and to circle back to those things that are most important as we thought about our planning as we go through this. And certainly, that first bullet was emblematic of everything we've done beginning, at the beginning of the summer, in terms of whatever plan we have in place, it needed to be nimble, flexible, and responsive. And we use those words frequently, but it's been really symptomatic of how we've adjusted throughout this COVID process. But at the end of the day, if you'll notice, the next two words, health and safety, have never left our sight and have been our North Star as we've worked through all of our plans. As you can, as you will remember, as we started our Healthy Back-to-School Plan in July, and the board approved that, we asked families to commit to a learning model for the first semester and that they would be given a choice to change for the second semester, and that's what we've done, and we've upheld our commitment. We also said it was a priority for the Board of Education that to do whatever we could as the second semester planning to ensure, to do the best of our ability, who requested a face-to-face model, change into the face-to-face, that they could get their homeschool. And as you will see in the data, we are going to be able to uphold that effort. And then likely, and secondarily, obviously, which is incredibly important, because our teachers do such an amazing job of building relationships with kids that to do everything we could to maintain a student's current teacher, if they remain in the same learning model, and based on the data that we have, we're going to be able to do that as well. So, Mrs. Weber, thank you. So just some high-level data that I want to share with the board, but also with the community. We gave, we gave the community two weeks, and parents two weeks, to really thoughtfully consider what second semester looked like for their student and their children. We gave them a lot of information. We're very transparent in terms of what it might look like. And you can see on that slide right there, those are the total number of requests that we received at the close of day on Monday. 269 requested a change from their current model to a different model. If you put that in perspective, in terms of roughly the 5,600 students that we have in our district now, that's around 4%. So what does that say? We're doing a good job in both of our models, and people feel, for the most part, comfortable where they're at, and that's a tribute to the leadership team and first and foremost, the teachers that are delivering that instruction, either remotely or in the face-to-face model. So you can see the breakdown there. Beth, if you wouldn't mind, please, if you just go back to that one, if you can, to the first, yeah, thank you. You can see that, obviously, the numbers from face-to-face to virtual are lower, and the numbers from virtual to face-to-face are higher. We didn't expect anything different than that. I think we were a little uncertain as to the total volume of requests. And I think when you think around 4%, I think that speaks volumes for the work that we've done over the course of the last six months. So if you look at the net of that, it's about 181 net increase in the face-to-face model moving forward. So Beth, if you wouldn't mind, Mrs. Weber, please, thank you. You can see right here, we've broken it down by building and by transition from one learning model to the next. You can see face-to-face to virtual classroom, very, very low numbers at K through 8, little higher numbers at the high school, not unexpected. When you think about a high school of about 1,600 or 1,700 students, that number certainly will be handled easily within the context of how we're delivering. If you're thinking about the virtual to face-to-face, you can see the numbers there that break out. I would reference that you've got a little higher number at Blue Ash, but if you will remember, when we started our Healthy Back-to-School Plan, the Blue Ash numbers were about 50-50 face-to-face to virtual. So in that context, welcoming 37 students back to face-to-face should be handled with relative efficiency and ease. A little bigger numbers at Sims Elementary, but again, those numbers, if you will remember, was about an even split face-to-face virtual as we started this school year. Numbers at junior high and high school, obviously, in green are a little bit bigger, but we believe we can, we can handle any of those transitions back to the face-to-face model and do it in an accommodating way. You know, as we think about this, you know, we do have numbers specifically at grade level. We have that broken down by grade level. We're going to share those with the building principals today. We're going to get a little bit more granular as we meet with them today and really kind of allow them to do their work moving forward. Okay? So you can see, those are, those are good numbers for us. You know, I want to thank the community for taking thoughtful time to really reflect on what was best for their individual students, and we will do our very, very best to make that transition as seamless and positive for every single student. So, next steps. Next step, as I mentioned today, principals have in their hands right now the individual building breakdown of their data. We are going to meet with them today and really start to talk to them about a process that we're going to ask them to do to go through to accommodate these requests. So in a nutshell, we're going to let them begin their work after our meeting today. Secondarily to that, we are going to issue at some point here in the near future a second semester transportation form that will go out to all current face-to-face learners and to all face-to-face change requests. So anybody that has requested transition to the face-to-face model, we will give them a transportation to basically ask the fundamental question, are you requesting transportation and busing service for the second semester? I want to thank Mr. Miller and his team for everything they've done. They've done a lot of groundwork already to kind of anticipate what an influx of busing might look like, and we believe we're going to be able to handle that as well. And then, once we get through the work in the next couple of weeks, it's our commitment, as we've said from the very beginning, to let families know what their status is for second semester. That would be right before the winter break, and we will, we will do, we will make sure that our families and staff know what will happen for the February 1st, first day of the second semester. But we are feeling very confident at this point in time that we're going to be able to take care of every one of these requests and really adhere to and honor the priorities that the board set as we went into the second semester planning. So I will pause there before I get to the last slide, because that's a little different track. But any reactions, comments, questions from the Board of Education or from the leadership team that's been so incredibly helpful as we've put this plan together?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Forstofel, that I think that the plan that you and your team put forth in the communication to our community about these, these possible changes that they could make in their students' learning mode was, were very effective, and I'm glad to hear that their requests are going to be able to be accommodated in their homeschools. So thank you to you and your team for a very smooth transition to this.
Yeah, and I would just add, I echo Melissa's comments, but also want to just note that, you know, I think this speaks volumes for all the work that was done in the planning effort to make sure that the models were equivalent and make sure that the virtual learning was, you know, the best that it could be. I know a lot went on with that. I want to reach out to the teachers and staff and thank them for all the hard work they've done to really work with the students in either model and make sure that the education that we continue to deliver is the best possible that we can. And I think with the small numbers of change requests, I think that the community and the parents are echoing my comments as well. So thank you to everybody.
Okay. All right, thank you for those comments. So if we could go maybe to the last slide, Mrs. Weber, thank you. So we want to provide just a really quick update on where we're at currently, aside from the second semester. As you know, and I'm grateful that the board gave us an opportunity to take this week, following the Thanksgiving break as somewhat of a buffer week, to really get a handle on potential impact from break travel, break gatherings, and so forth. So we wanted to provide just kind of a really quick update, but also kind of lay out where we're at in our next steps with our DART team. But before I do that, as you know, the remote learning is progressing this week. All evidence is that it's going well. I do want to give a special commendation to Mr. Fritz and his team as they've responded time, in a timely fashion, to any kind of technology or connectivity issues that any of our families are having. It's been busy up here at the district offices. They've responded incredibly well to that. So, Bill, thank you to you and your team. So as you know, this buffer week really was to get a handle on the impact of the break and to see what impact it would have to positive cases among student and staff. So we've given you just some really quick data, and this date is between Wednesday, November 25th, and at the end of the day currently, yesterday, I would share with you that that data changed overnight. So the number of positive cases in terms of our students is now seven that we have. And that changes then the close contacts for students from 67 to 68. We've had a significant uptick in our positive cases among staff now at 24, and then the positive cases, close contact cases for staff has now reached 10. So we're not surprised by this. We expected kind of an uptick in that. We met with the DART team first thing on Monday morning to kind of review the county and ZIP code data, and it's obviously still concerning. So it's really not any different than what we're seeing at the state level and national level. We are going to meet with that DART team again today around the noon time and at 8:00 a.m. tomorrow morning to continue monitoring not only the county data, but remember, we have, we are shining our light on the school-based data because we, as we've said, when we proposed this buffer week, that it would be our intention for students to return to face-to-face, and I'm quoting any major shift in school health concerns or school-based data. So we've got some work to do over the next couple of days as we think very clearly about what next week may look like. We're expecting that some clarity will come in the next couple of days in terms of our school-based impact. And so we'll, we'll very carefully analyze that with the DART team. I do need to, I do need to thank and commend that team. That's been an amazing opportunity to really lean on some people that are more in tune with, with the health situation locally. So Doctors Beck and Girardi and Mr. Clayton have been an amazing, amazing support for me as superintendent as we've, as we've tried to struggle through some of these decisions. And, and again, I'll thank Mr. Mercurio, he's been kind of the, the uploader of that data, and it's been incredibly helpful. So I'll pause for a moment and take any questions or reactions from the board and certainly members of that DART team that are with us. You certainly have an opportunity to share.
Yeah, my, my only comment is, you know, there is spec, there's news today that the CDC is expected to come out with reduction in quarantines from 14 to 10 days with no tests and seven days with a negative test. I would just, you know, I would just ask that, you know, we, we take that into consideration too, when you meet with the DART team, to really look at the quarantines that are going on in the school and that we continue to follow what's, what's both best and healthy, but also CDC guidelines, if possible.
Mr. Ballant, I would share that while we have seen the, the new CDC guidelines, we have to adhere to whatever Hamilton County Public Health tells us to do, and they have not adjusted anything about the days of quarantine at this point. So i-if Hamilton County does change and start to follow those new recommendations from the CDC, we would, of course, follow that as well.
And then my, my other question, kind of, you know, piggybacking onto that, you know, we, we know that other schools have gotten into programs where they're doing rapid testing to avoid quarantining. Is that something that, that, that we've looked at or considered or discussed with the DART team?
It has been brought up by the DART team. We'll revisit that with them today and tomorrow to see what our options are for that.
Mr. Ballant.
It's important to understand, though. Go ahead.
Mr. Ballant, I would, my understanding is that the school districts that are doing so are in a pilot program, and that testing is funded, I believe, by an outside source as opposed to the, the school district doing that. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well. So I, I would anticipate, once that study is completed, that that may be something that the state will consider looking at beyond just the school districts that initially participated. Mrs. Spencer, did you have anything to add to that?
No, that's what I was going to share. Thank you.
Mr. Forstofel, one of the things that caught my eye with this slide and your update was the relative ratio of positive cases between the staff and the students being four times higher with the staff. My, my question on that is, how are we positioned for the substitutes as needed to make sure we have continuity of the teaching?
That's a great question, Mr. Comerford. What, one of the exercises I'm going to need to do in the next couple of days is to drill down more granularly on that staff and to see the disaggregated data, to see the impact. As you know, as we started this process, one of the key elements that I need to consider operationally in, in a decision whether to keep the district face-to-face or a particular building face-to-face is availability of staff. And that just doesn't translate to school buildings. It, it translates to other departments as well. As you know, we've had some specific challenges in the last several weeks that, well, actually, leading up to the break, that had some significant impact on various departments, transportation being one, one of those. We weathered that and think coming out of, if we come back face-to-face next week, we'll be in okay shape. So again, I, you know, that's good, that's an overarching thing that I need to consider as I make decisions, you know, for individual buildings or district-wide. But I appreciate your question. That's a good, you know, very perceptive on your part.
And, and maybe the follow-up on that is, and do we have the breakdown between the certified and non-certified cases with the staff?
We do. I just don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay.
Yep.
And, Mr. Forstofel, if you look at the total numbers, having gone through, you know, almost a full semester now, if we, if we had everyone return back into the system, either student or staff, do you know? I know we've had a lot of discussion about different elements, but as we think about kind of the aggregate numbers, are we able to, you know, return people to their roles or, or back into the student environment? I hadn't heard about anyone not returning.
Well, I, if I think I understand your question, Mr. Evans, is that, you know, obviously, you know, if they're a close contact and they've gone through the, the quarantining process, they are able to return, assuming that, that they're not positive. So, you know, as you look at the dashboard, which I, which is up to date through 11/29, we, we currently have 146 close contacts that are in quarantine. So, you know, we've not had any issues, for the most part, once they're done with their quarantining, coming back into their roles. Now, there have been times where, if it's been, you know, a significant challenge, and I'll, and I'll give the example of the Transportation Department, I do have the ability to declare somebody as an essential employee, assuming several things come into place. One is asymptomatic positive test, and I leverage that on a couple of occasions, specifically with the Transportation Department. I'm very reluctant to do that, but there's certain markers that I need to have in order to do that. Those were the only two examples, for the most part, that I did that.
Mr. Evans, we've had a few folks who are close contacts in quarantine who have their quarantines extended, and that's usually due to positive cases within their household and them not being able to self-isolate from those individuals inside their home. So sometimes we've had quarantines last a little bit longer than the two-week period that they were initially assigned, but everyone has come back, even though they've had an extended quarantine.
And is that, is that the same for positive cases too?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Forstofel, when do you expect to let the community know next, what's going to happen next week?
Yeah, great question. We will meet with the DART team kind of a, I don't want to say a final touch point tomorrow morning, and it would be our hope that we can get to a decision. So at the latest, it would be Friday. And, you know, so that's kind of the marker I'm thinking about.
Well, I think we can say, Mr. Forstofel, that that's been, that's been the process up to
Well, I think we can say, Mr. Forstoppel, that that's been, that's been the process up to this point, right? Where the DART team meets and you make a decision and let the community know on Friday. So I think we're just doing, we've been doing the whole time, so.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Appreciate that. We got some work to do over the next couple of days, but that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Forstoppel, moving on to Child Nutrition and Wellness Update.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. So we certainly would like to give an opportunity for Mrs. Warren to give an update, one on child nutrition, and, but also a quick wellness update as required by board policy. But before I turn this over to Kelsey, I really need to thank her and commend her just to, you know, when we think about, if we go back in history a little bit, and history meaning to March, everything that she led with her team, beginning with the school shutdown, continuing throughout the summer, and then leaning in towards beginning a new school year, has simply been remarkable. And, and my words alone can't fully describe everything that she did to lead this community through delivering healthy meals to our, to our families. It, it was truly remarkable, remarkable work. And, you know, there were times when I felt, you know, Kelsey was kind of in a whirlwind as she was reacting to things that certainly were out of her control, including some significant staffing issues that impacted a couple of her buildings. So, Kelsey, I want to publicly thank you for your work in, in continuing to position the district and most specifically our families and students to do everything we can to provide nutritious, nutritious meal. But as a result of the challenges, there's been an impact obviously on our program, both from a, a service, but also from a financial perspective as well. So, Kelsey, I'm going to turn this over to you. I'm grateful that you're with us this morning and, and again, thank you for your work.
Thank you. And thank you for having me today and letting me kind of give you an update. Most of the data I will show you is from last school year, so twenty nineteen, twenty. And then I'll just kind of go over some stuff that's been going on as well. So obviously, missing almost two and a half months of school and paying our staff at the same time caused a loss. I, I don't know how many years it's been since the Child Nutrition Department has lost money, but I, I feel like it's been quite a bit. So this is expected. This has happened at every single school district that I know of. And, and so as you can see, we had a very large cash balance in July twenty nineteen. So luckily, we had that and it didn't affect the district in any way. And we still have, we started the year with a pretty large cash balance. So our total loss was a hundred and forty thousand dollars and a hundred, one hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. I will note that we had by the end of February already made a hundred thousand dollars. So we were, we were on, on point to make quite a bit of money this past year. So really, the loss is a little bit more than that overall. But, so those are the numbers. Next slide, please. So then this is just kind of a recap of our free and reduced eligibility and how it's changed from last year. So twenty eighteen, nineteen to twenty nineteen, twenty, as you can see, it did go down a bit, and it's just kind of slowly trending down. And the two that had the biggest changes, Green actually went up almost three percent, which was surprising. And Blue Ash lost four percent of free and reduced percentage. So that's pretty large. The other ones were around two percent, so nothing too major, but those two were, had, had the biggest impact. Next slide. So then this is just kind of recapping our average breakfast numbers for last school year. They really didn't change very much from the year before. The average daily participation percent was nine point six percent last year and nine, nine percent or two years ago, and then nine percent last year. And this takes, doesn't necessarily take into account all the, the breakfast that we missed out on by missing two and a half months of school. So really, the total breakfast served is very, very skewed compared to a normal year. So, missing obviously a lot of, a lot of breakfast that we could have served. Next slide. So then this is just comparing the average breakfast numbers and looking at the, what that is like as a participation percentage at each building. And then I also put the free and reduced percentages so, so you could compare. Pretty much all of our breakfasts actually either stayed the same or saw an increase. The only school that there was any kind of significance was actually at Green. So we had a loss of an average of twenty breakfasts, which is pretty large. So when we get back to normal, hopefully, we can work on how we can get the green breakfast program back up. I mean, as you see, out of all the Sycamore schools, though, Green does have the highest average participation. They've always had a great breakfast and lunch participation at that building. So, next slide. And then so average lunches stayed pretty much around the same. It was up a little bit, but it didn't really change the percentage. So it was thirty-six percent of our students participate. And this is just buying actual lunches and just buying actual breakfast. So this doesn't take into account all the all-of-cart items we do, like if someone just buys a sandwich or if they buy drinks or snacks or something like that. And then, like I said, with the breakfast, the lunches, the numbers also skewed. We missed out on somewhere around a hundred thousand lunches that we would have served if we would have been able to go the whole school year. Next slide.
Mrs. Warren, just on the last slide, is that eighteen, nineteen or nineteen, twenty for the total lunches served?
That is a typo. Yeah, that's nineteen, twenty. Sorry. And, and then I did the same thing as I did with breakfast with lunch. So the school that had like the most significant decrease in meals was Blue Ash. It was about a three percent drop. So we'll definitely have to look into that, but it would kind of make sense too with Blue Ash having such a large drop and therefore introduced percentage from twenty eighteen, nineteen to twenty nineteen, twenty. And then we saw a, a great increase in Maple Dale and Montgomery, which was really, really good to see as well as Nativity. And Nativity is one of the schools that I was really keeping an eye on, and their numbers have continued to increase, which is great. Next slide. So I wanted to just share some of the data from the closure last school year and kind of what percentage of meals we were doing compared to what we normally do. So just reminding, breakfast was normally around nine percent average participation, and then lunch was thirty-six percent. So as you can see, huge, huge difference in, in the number of meals that we were able to serve during the closure. We normally do somewhere around twenty-two-hundred a day, and we were doing around two hundred and thirty to fifty to sixty. So that kind of shows financially where, where everything kind of came into play. So we did offer, we started out with five sites where families could come three days a week. So Monday, Wednesday, Friday was our delivery days. And they would come and then pick up for it. It could be for any kids between the ages of one and eighteen. So they didn't actually have to be a Sycamore student to take, to take part of this, this program, since it, this was the, called the Seamless Summer Program. And that's actually what we're doing right now as well this whole school year, and that's how we're able to serve a free meal. So it's a great program. And I think allowing people to bring their younger siblings, we really saw people take advantage of that. So that was nice. But like I said, we started out with five sites and then we ended with seven sites. And we strategically picked those sites to be where our highest free and reduced and needy families were so that we made sure that they had access to free and reduced meals like they do normally during the school year. So I'm glad we had the numbers that we did. Obviously, would have loved it to be more, but I'm glad we could provide meals for those families during the closure. Next slide. So then the next two slides are just something required. So just, we, I have to present to the Board of Education basically saying that our nutritional standards for food and beverages sold outside of school meals is compliant, and our district is compliant. That is something I look into when I go into buildings. If you want to go to the next slide, I'll kind of show you what I look at. So the midnight, the night before, until thirty minutes after school, any food that is sold to students has to meet certain nutritional standards. So those are all the standards that I have to follow when making my menu, when selling all-of-cart items, smart snacks, drinks, kind of anything. That's, that doesn't just pertain to my department. That pertains to the whole school during that timeframe. And that also has to do with well, or vending machines as well. So I do go through the schools. I look to see, are they on? If they're on, are they selling what they're supposed to be selling? So that is something I do every year, and we were compliant. Next slide. And so for my wellness update, last year for wellness, we pretty much spent a majority of our time planning the Sycamore Wellness Festival. So that was supposed to be at the beginning of April. Obviously, the closure and everything that went on, we had to postpone that event. So that's, we spent a lot of weeks with our planning committee. We were going to have a Ninja Warrior course for all the students and Sycamore families to utilize. We were going to have booths set up, like healthy snacks and stuff for, for them to try. So it was going to be a really, really great opportunity. Unfortunately, it had to be postponed. So hopefully, when large gatherings can happen again, we can get that going. So all the hard work from the committee doesn't go to waste. So that was really the, the majority of what we did last year. So not too, too much to report on. I do have to look at the, our wellness policy this year with a group of people. I have to get a group together to look at, to, to make sure it's up to date and it meets all, all the standards. So I will be doing that after the break. I'll be getting a group together. So they actually, it was supposed to be done last year, but they extended it with everything that was going on at the end of the school year. So I will be doing that. And, and then just some random child nutrition updates. So I know last year it had been approved for me to hire a child nutrition field supervisor to help me with some of the things that kind of slipped between the cracks and then also just be more present in the schools, make sure, making sure everything's going correctly from day to day. So that position, Liz Wellman was who did it last year. She did a fantastic job. So good of a job that she actually left to become a director at Fairfield Schools. So we were sad to see her go, but that position is open and I'm keeping it open until we kind of know that we're going to make money with everything going on this year. I just thought it was, it was best to put that money towards our profit. So that is open. So we've been doing a curbside meal service for all of our virtual families every Wednesday, and it's been going really well. I'm so thankful for all the families that are taking advantage of it. We started at just the high school, and now we're at every single building. And I know the family's really, we're really happy that we kind of gave it to their homeschool. So they go to their homeschool or their oldest child's school, depending on how many kids they have in their family. And that has actually, those meal numbers have really helped kind of keep us afloat this school year. So as long as we don't miss a lot of school, we, we should be good on money this year. So fingers crossed for that. And then also this week, with everyone being remote, we are offering, we offered a pickup site on Tuesday at all buildings for the families to come pick up five breakfasts and five lunches. So anytime that, for some reason, we have to close school, we will be offering that so that everyone still has access to school meals. And I've also been working with the Rotano Design Group on all of the kitchen designs for the, the new buildings. That's been a really great opportunity, and I'm really glad that we were able to work with this company. They've been great, and I can't wait to see the finished designs. We did have to close the refuel station in our Aviator Express. Those were our two after-school snack opportunities at the high school that kind of helped to make some extra money for us. We unfortunately had to close those with everything going on since students should not be staying after school and congregating. So that will affect our profitability. There's just so many things that go into, to making money, and that's just one of them. And, and then also, I am still involved in the School Nutrition Association of Ohio. This is my third year on their board. I am the membership chair this year. And then also next year, it's a two-year term. So I'm still involved in that and, and keeping in touch with what's going on with other child nutrition departments in the area in all of Ohio as well. And then really, my, my main goal this year, and the thing that's at the forefront of everything I do is just monitoring our profitability and doing anything I can to make sure that we don't lose money this year. So I think that's my last slide. Next slide. Yeah. So does anyone have any questions at all about anything I went over or that maybe I didn't go over that you were curious about?
Ms. Warren, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it every year. It's well done, and it's very insightful at the board level. I understand there's a lot of moving parts. My question might be, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but question is, is how are we trending this year compared to last year when we were in school? If you can give any additional color, especially around the profitability.
So September was really bad, but we did make money in October. So as long as, actually, we made more money this October than we did last October. So things are definitely trending in the right direction. Like I said, as long as we don't have multiple closures and weeks off where we're having to pay staff and not serve meals, we should be in really good shape this year. So it just kind of all depends with what happens because I got, as I showed with how many meals we serve per day, when you don't have that every day, that, that's a lot of money. With the program we're running this year, we do get more reimbursement per meal. So we actually get reimbursed like the same rate for every single meal we serve, whether the student used to qualify as free, reduce or full pay. So that's, that ends up with us getting a lot more reimbursement back from the government. But we're also not bringing in as much money. Our all-of-cart sales are down pretty significantly. And then we're, we're not bringing in any money from those paid and reduced kids, but it all is kind of evening out, which is, which is good.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mercurio, the one thing I would say is August and/or September are normally pretty bad anyway. Like Kelsey gets hit with a lot of the salaries and benefits upfront, and it, it frontloads equipment that she bought over the summer. So, you know, to prepare for the school year with the food purchasing and all the other pieces that she needs to get the school year started, traditionally, the beginning of the year is always, she's working from behind right off the bat. So I will say when we review, we review her financials monthly. And I, when she said that we made more money this October than last October, I was at least encouraged because September was, obviously, starting as late as we did after Labor Day. You know, we were already starting at a couple of week disadvantage in her department because of what happened. But overall, I think we're pleased that we're at least trending in the right direction. And you may recall, she mentioned Nativity and that we were not making money previously at that location. And we structured the contract to be a guaranteed, excuse me, guaranteed profit at that location. So trending again positively in that area. But again, if we don't make the guaranteed profit, then there's a check that they have to write to make sure that we make that money. So there are some contingencies if there are closures, but to date, they have not had a closure. So, you know, we would still trend towards that guaranteed profit. But overall, I think we're very pleased that where we're at at this point.
Mr. Mercurio, just let me also add.
That's all very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mercurio, I'd also just add, as part of the quarterly reports, we'll also make Mr. Mercurio, I'd also just add, as part of the quarterly reports, we'll also make sure you're aware of any issues with the child nutrition department as well. You know, we made, we made sure that the board was aware of the challenges financially that Mrs. Warren was going to have with operations, just given the situation. And actually, I'm very pleased at many of the things she's been able to tackle with looking at programming that's available, implementing it and continuing to refine the operations within each one of our buildings and working with our building principals to, to do that in a really safe way. So thank you. This is Warren for, for your work and board will just continue to give you updates as needed, but we are seeing some positive news in that area.
Yeah. Great job considering the circumstances. Thank you.
Yeah, Mrs. Warren, appreciate the, the report here and then all the effort certainly, you know, over the last couple of years, but certainly, you know, with all the challenges you faced this year. One question I'd like to ask you is, and we've really, we've asked this of kind of all the building leaders and and department leaders and the district office, you know, is there anything else from the board level that, you know, we could provide a support to keep, you know, the services, you know, equivalent to what we normally have? We put a lot of resources into this year to try to reduce the stress on people, keep their education going, but also, you know, from the services you provide, it also helps with sort of the mental health and wellbeing and just the stability of a lot of individuals. Are there any things you kind of wish you had or ideas that the board you wish would consider to help, you know, just provide support to the students and the community?
I'm not sure. It's probably something I'd have to think about. Possibly with wellness, wellness has definitely been something that has unfortunately had to fall to the bottom of my plate where serving the students obviously has to be in the forefront and making sure that it's with all the changes and challenges, it's taken pretty much all of my time. So that might be somewhere, but I would definitely have to kind of analyze it and, and then get back with you.
Kind of along those same lines, Mrs. Warren. Thank you for your presentation. It's always very informative. I'm concerned about families in our community who are food insecure. And do we have any kind of mechanism? And I don't know if that's in your, comes under your umbrella. But have we been able to possibly identify families that could benefit from additional food sources and, and the plans that we have going into the winter break? You could talk just a little bit about what we're, what, what your department's going to do for that.
So really currently all my department is offering is the virtual meals. That also is for any, any child between the ages of one and eighteen this year. We could definitely look at maybe offering that to non-virtual families as well, like if they have siblings or something like that. I could definitely look into that. I, I believe that the nurses also have a list of students that they provide, like weekend backpack meals for. I can't really speak on that very much. I just know that they do do that because we provide lists for them as, as they need them. I, I know that they've been sending certain things to them because someone had contacted me about it. So like bread, canned goods, things like that. So I don't know if there's something we could do with that or Operation Give Back maybe. I could definitely get with other people in the district and see what we can do to make sure we're providing things for the break.
This is why I know Operation Give Back is also a great resource with their food pantry for our families. And I believe some of our local churches are providing some of those supports as well. Operation Give Back right now has their big holiday food drive and Christmas store push. So I think they're going to, they will help tremendously through that, that time of break when families might be more food insecure, just because we don't have our, our services available. I will just add, I, I think one of the things that we forget with when we talk about these programs is that they are federal programs. And they do have very strict rules and regulations, which I think Mrs. Warren does a great job in following those. So whenever we look at providing these types of services, we do have to just make sure we stay within those guidelines and, and not run into any issues with, with the federal government that might make our programs be discontinued or not provide us the reimbursement that, that we would, that we could get if we run them correctly. So it's a, it's a delicate balance and Mrs. Warren does a great job with, with keeping both of those things in mind, both the regulations, but also providing as much availability as she can.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Warren, I, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to publicly thank you for the work that you've done. I, I think the the food delivery in the spring was something that was outstanding and made me proud to be part of the Sycamore family with the work that you led on that to deliver the food. And, and as we started up in this mixed mode, I know there have been many challenges. So I'm echoing other, other comments, but I just wanted to publicly thank you for the leadership and the work that you've done this year.
Mr. Comaford, if I, I would be remiss to say that I would echo those same comments, working alongside Kelsey in a kitchen. I think she probably wanted to kick me out of the kitchen several times because I had, I will say, after doing it several weeks in a row, I can say that I have a newfound appreciation for what our child nutrition staff does every day. And when I look back at that slide that says we were, I know how much work went into producing five percent of meals for the district. And I couldn't imagine if we had to do twenty-five percent. I mean, it, it was a exhausting task and it took multiple days to provide each family with ten meals. And you know, I think probably the thing I'm most proud of beyond all the work, all the volunteers, all the district office staff members that supported Kelsey throughout it was just Kelsey's ability to stay calm and stay composed during an absolutely unreal time trying to do all of that while still doing her current job of all the office work that needed to be done. But also she was collaborating with outside agencies like Sycamore Bridges and Operation Give Back. And you know, I, I would say she was probably during that time doing the job of three and then turning around and losing her field supervisor because she mentored her so well as a intern and then as a staff member to turn around and lose her to a district twice our size that has her first job in a school district. So it just goes to, it's just a huge credit to who Kelsey is and what she does for us. And I tell her all the time, I'm just always so impressed with her composure and her ability to just handle so much at such a young age. So I've learned so much from her. Just sometimes she has to calm me down. So, and that's a good thing to have people around you like, like Kelsey. So appreciate all the positive comments for her because she, they are well deserved.
Yeah. And just, and just a really great team that she works with as well. They're all, they're all wonderful. I think Ms. Georgia was on the, in the meeting at first. I'm not sure that she's still there, but yes, people like her, everybody who works on, on those teams every day that, that really make it work. So.
Yes, I agree. I'm, I'm biased, but I do feel like we have such an amazing child nutrition staff. I've worked in three different districts and I, I've never had a staff around me like this. So I'm, I'm very grateful to have all of them and all the hard work they did. And like Chad said, we had district office people helping. We had bus drivers, bus monitors. We had everyone and it was great for everyone to come together and help make it happen and so that we could feed the families. So.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Forsthal will back to you. Change order process.
So as the construction ramps up, there obviously will be some needs to bring to the board at some point, change orders. What we're, what Mr. Lewis is going to talk with you a little bit about is, is a request for a process to maybe streamline some of that. So depending upon the, the spacing of our meetings, if there's an opportunity to allocate him some authority to approve some of these under a certain threshold to keep, so to ensure that we don't delay our construction processes. I believe we did this when we did Maple Dale as well. So Mr. Lewis, I'll turn it over to you.
And, and board members, I know all of you at some time have seen a change order on one of the many projects that we have and normally if it's not as intense or not as large as what we're going to be dealing with over the next few years. I don't know that is, it is as critical as it is at this juncture, but as we work through construction, especially with site issues and site development, there is always change orders and there's always critical needs that come up because when you're dealing with soil and you're dealing with digging into the soil and footers, they just can't know or understand every condition that they're going to see or get into as they work through a process. And that's what a change order process is for because we don't want them assuming or billing us for those things upfront until they know that those conditions exist. So I've preloaded you with some information previously about this topic just so that we could have a, a brief dialogue or discussion or, and really just that, I don't know that it needs to be a formal process. It's just, you know, we need a head nod of some kind that in your comfort level of approving change orders and allowing me to be able to approve change orders with the team from S H P and with our representatives from S H P that are supporting us, like Mr. Janigan and Mrs. McKenzie and Mr. Dur to be able to approve those change orders, make sure that we're agreeable to them and approve them out in the field so that I don't have to wait for the two meetings a month to be able to bring them forward. What it, that doesn't mean that we're not going to bring them forward for your subsequent approval, but what it would mean is that I approve them into the, in the field. They've been approved and then they come for subsequent, I'll say reapproval by the board or official approval by the board, knowing that I was authorized to make those changes out in the field. And you know, from a comfort level standpoint, right now, from a state standpoint, anything below fifty thousand dollars is something that I have the ability to prove along with Beth. As long as it's not some permanent or fixed asset that needs to be bid out above fifty grand, we have the authority to make those type of expenditures through our policies, through our procedures and through our state policies and procedures. So that was the threshold that was sticking out to me because I don't think there'll be a terrible amount of things that would come up to that level. That would be, you know, obviously anything above fifty thousand would be a pretty significant change order that I would want to have a discussion with the school board about because I'd want you to be informed about it and feel comfortable with it before we would proceed. Because I, I can honestly say I'm probably one of the harshest when it comes to change orders and scrutinizing finances because I don't like to spend money when it's, when I feel like we should be able to get it done. So I think you have seen my work and you believe in the commitment that I have of protecting the taxpayers and protecting their dollars. And I would just ask for some consideration to allow us to be able to do those change orders out in the field and then bring them back at your subsequent meetings for approval that are under fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Lewis, this is John. Yeah, I'll just echo what I said at the last meeting is, you know, we're very familiar with your work. We know that you'll, you'll do that for us. Keep the project within budget and on time. And I think that's what we care about most. So thank you for all you're doing and I'm good with what you just said.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good as well. My only stipulation would be if, you know, if it starts to get out of budget, you know, just based on the number of change orders, I think it's something we're going to have to relook at. But as long as, as we're within budget still, I'm perfectly fine with it.
I am as well. Is there anything, Mrs. Weber, from a voting standpoint that we have to do for that?
Um, you know, I think it's always good to have things memorialized. Just to make sure that if an auditor would ever ask, we could show that we did have the authorization of the board. It gives Mr. Lewis some protection. It gives me some protection. And I think it's, it also likely gives him information that he can utilize when he's working with both of our, you know, the architects as well as the construction companies that we're going to be working with. So if I, I don't know if you want me to just basically come up with what I think is, is a resolution that we could have the board approve. I can either bring that back to the next meeting or we can probably do it on the fly right now, I think.
Okay. Mr. Lewis, what, what would you prefer, this meeting or in the next meeting?
E- either one is fine, Mrs. Weiss. I don't think there's any pressing issues. And the one other thing I would say is if it would help the board and Mr. Ballant and Mr. Mercurio, I, I think one of the things that we have done traditionally, I, I know it's, we haven't really gotten too deep into construction yet, but there's usually a standing item on the agenda to give construction updates. And what I'll do is try to preload the board prior to board meetings with budget updates for, for each project, especially summarizing those change orders and the impact to the budget. So that you can see where we're at and make sure that it's still within those guidelines that would address your concerns.
Yeah, we're, we're working toward reporting for those now that we are, I believe through the design development process for most of the buildings at this point. So that's something we'll be looking at really as part of our monthly financial reports as well.
Okay. Well, Mrs. Weber, if you, since there isn't a pressing need at this, at this meeting to do it, if we could just put something together and have that in our December evening meeting, that would be great.
And I would, I'd like the language to be consistent with what Paul proposed in that I would support that we do the fifty thousand for Mr. Lewis, as, as long as we are trending under budget. If we start going over, over budget, I think that's different for me.
Okay. Great. Anything else from the board on that? All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on, I need a motion for the approval of a change order for Sims Elementary School renovation project.
So moved, Paul?
Second, David.
Mr. Lewis, can I handle this one?
Yeah, just a very simple, exactly what I talked about, kind of in the last process is when you get into the soils, there's just unforeseen conditions that come up. So there were some, some loose soils that need to be compacted and you know, they do a test on it. They basically take a large loaded truck and roll over it. And if it gives way, then they know they have to do an undercut and compact it a little better to make sure that it doesn't do that when asphalt's on top of it. So that's really the, the change order there is just some soft soils that need to be compacted and they do it through an undercut. So.
Hey, any questions from the board? Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballant?
Hi.
Mr. Evans?
Hi.
Mr. Comaford?
Hi.
Mr. Mercurio?
Hi.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Forsthal?
Nothing, nothing huge. I just want to thank our students, our parents, and certainly our staff as we've transitioned into remote learning week. Special kudos to our, our staff that once we made that decision prior to the break, did a lot of work in preparation to get ready to do this differently. So I just want to say a public thank you as we've seamlessly transitioned into this. So that's all I have, Mrs. Weiss. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Forsthal. Okay. Moving on to the personnel consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda. And just as a reminder, this includes from the addendum, item one B C, two A B C D E F G H I, three A and four A B C D E F G H.
So moved, Brad.
Second is Paul.
Mrs. Weber, please. Mrs. Weber, please call the roll.
Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
And Mrs. Weiss?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to other Board of Education business. As it states in the agenda, we will have our organizational meeting at the district office on January 13th at 7:00. Prior to that, at 6:00, we will have our tax budget hearing. Mrs. Weber, do you know if that person is going to be joining us remotely or if they're going to be there in person?
My plan is to make sure that we have, we, we do that virtually just because I know we'll have challenges in being able to get, get, get our community into the district office. So we will have that as a virtual opportunity. We'll see how the attendance is.
Yes, absolutely. I think it's going to be a stellar crowd at that one.
I, I agree.
Okay. And then as is with tradition, we have an appoint, we need to appoint a president. I get the, I have the honor, I guess, of appointing a president pro tem to serve over our and convene the 2020 organizational meeting. And as we did last year, I think we are going, I'm going to appoint Mr. John Mercurio as the longest-serving board member to serve as the president pro tem to convene the 2021 organizational meeting. So congratulations, Mr. Mercurio.
Thank you. I'm honored.
All right. Is there anything else from any other board member or anyone from administration before we adjourn this meeting and move into executive session? Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with O R C 121 dot 22 G 1, Employment Dismissal Evaluation Appointment, Compensation and Discipline of a Public Employee Official or Regulated Individual, and in accordance with O R C 121 dot 22 G 6, Safety and Security.
So moved, David.
Second, John.
Mrs. Weber?
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Mercurio?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Ballant?
Aye.
And Mr. Commerford?
Aye.
Okay, everyone, we'll move over. We'll take about a five-minute, just quick break, and then we'll see everyone in executive session. Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who joined us today. Thank you.
Thank you.